Okay. Meeting has been called to order. Motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second, please.
I'll second that one, too.
Seconded. Motion to approve the minutes from last meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Payroll. Chris, as I've stated before, I am caught up. How about that? Bill to be paid upon Franny's approval.
He's been in here and looked at them.
So should we go like that?
Yeah.
Motion, please?
No, no.
Okay, questions?
Well, there you got two on there for the Lakeview, please. What's that second one for?
Okay, so the $1,280.
That's the one.
For eight months, we've been paying them 2015.
They caught up with the back pay finally.
They caught us.
I was wondering if that ain't what it was.
They caught us on that whole deal, and so now that's eight months. That's from July 1 to February 1, because March 1 then a new.
The new one, yeah.
So Ron, we've been paying them $3,935 a month, and we've actually supposed to have been paying them $4,095.
Okay.
So.
We've been short shooting them.
That was the only thing that I seen on it that.
Any other questions? Rob?
No.
Albert?
We need to add one.
Yes.
It's a... It's an APGA bill for $95, American Public Gas Association. They're gonna do what's called a DEMP for us. It's a distribution integrity management program. And it's a... It's a... It's an outline of what we should be doing with our distribution system. And basically, what we do is answer a few questions, and they put this whole thing together. And we look it over and make sure it's right, but it's about 60-some pages. This $95 is for five years, not just for one.
Oh.
So it's a five-year deal. Which is a pretty good deal for us. I don't know that I could put this 62-page deal together, so.
What, they'll come back every year? Is that just one check?
Right, no. We'll redo it every year for five years. Which it won't. I mean, it doesn't change, so it won't be a big deal. But at least it'll keep it up to date for us, so.
Any other questions? Discussion?
I make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Upon Franny's approval?
Yep, upon Franny's approval, and it sounds like he's already approved it, so.
Second?
Ron, second.
Ron, second.
I can't second anymore.
Third? Fourth? Motion's been made to accept and approve the bills to be paid. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? One thing I want to remind everybody is to please shut your cell phones off or to vibrate. Forgot to do that.
His is all.
That's the one I'm worried about.
Discuss, approve net metering policy and rate schedule.
Let's do the public hearings first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public hearing for update official zoning map. And that is now open to the public?
And that's the public hearing for the lot by Marilyn Ashinger's. Well, we have to do that and hear anybody's...
Complaints or objections or whatever.
We're not gonna hear anything, but... And then we have a resolution that we have to pass, not tonight, but...
In two weeks.
Yep, next time, so.
Yep. Any discussion upon that?
I noticed where that red flag is, probably is the line. Her garden's on the west side of that. It's right next to it, so.
Right next to it, yeah, and I thought that her garden was never really on that lot, so.
It just maybe might be a foot of it.
Honestly, I never really paid much attention to that lot, but when you go down and look at it, it's really kinda crappy.
Yeah, it is.
It just goes straight off.
Yeah.
You know, half of it's...
I drove by at last meeting.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I thought, wow.
Pretty crappy.
If somebody wants to build on there, they're gonna have to really go back into the bank and...
Yeah, cut that out, and they'll have to probably make some kind of retaining wall, I guess.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, I don't know how that's... But if they wanna do it, I'd...
I'd say, more power to them.
More power to them, that's right.
Okay. Since there's no further discussion, there's no... What do you hear? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing for updating the official zoning map there by Marilyn Ashinger. I'm gonna call for a roll call vote. Rob?
Yes.
Gary's absent. Franny's absent. Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Is that enough?
Yeah, this is just a public hearing. We just need to have a quorum here for that.
Kind of like the Democrats. We're super delicate.
Yeah. You're super all right.
We've got that done. Okay, anything else on that, Chris?
Not on that public hearing. Now we got another one.
Public hearing for Main Street lots for sale.
Yes, and...
And that's been opened.
At noon on Friday, that was the deadline to get any bids in for the lot down there, and we didn't get anything. No questions, no bids, no...
That's heard by Rob.
Right, the store, yep. And so, we have a resolution that we can approve tonight to... And when we approve that resolution, then that means that we've accepted Marvin's bid, and that we will sell him the lot for $5,000, and then he can build his little shed on there, so.
Any other questions? Concerns? Discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close that public hearing on the Main Street lots.
I so moved to close the public hearing on the Main Street lots.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing on the Main Street lots for sale. Roll call vote. Rob?
Yes.
Gary absent. Franny absent. Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Got it?
Yep.
Discuss and approve net metering policy and rate schedule. We talked about this several times.
We have talked about this several times, and we'll probably talk about it several more times. But what I wanna show you is if you look at page 5, page 5 through, I don't know, several. It's several pages long, and I'll try to get to the end of it here for you. That is a policy that I pirated from another company. Waverly Iowa, to be exact. And I read through it all. It goes to page 18. I read through the whole thing, and you know, really, it's pretty in-depth, but it also, it doesn't get too overboard, I don't think. I mean, really, I could understand it, so.
I think it's pretty thorough.
It's pretty thorough. Yeah, I mean, it's not way over your head type of thing, so I like it. What I want you guys to do is kinda look it over, and obviously, it sounded like Ron has already looked it over, and...
I bet Albert has. Rob, have you looked it over?
No.
I think we should look it over for a couple of weeks, and I wanna talk to... Actually, I wanna send it out to Mean and see if there's anything that we should change for our system specifically, because this is really Waverly specific, you know?
We're a little different.
But sure, we're a little different. It really fits us really well, I think, though.
Waverly's about... They're a little bigger than we are, but...
They're quite a bit bigger than we are. They have about 4,500 meters. So, but they have everything. They have gas, electricity, telecommunications. So, yeah, I like it. So I think, you know, the only thing we really need to talk about tonight is just that it's here. I want you guys to look it over, and we'll talk about it again in the future. The rate schedule is not in here. I didn't do anything with that.
No, because we'll have to figure that out, what we wanna do for Walke.
I still don't know for sure how we're gonna do that, but I think Mean will help us with our rate study.
Won't Mean give you a better handle on?
I think, you know, we'll try to push them towards not telling us what we need to charge, but at least giving us an idea of what each customer costs us, so we can have some idea of where to start with the schedule, you know, for residential, for commercial. We'll do all three of them, so. And then that way, if somebody does come in with a solar array, then we know we have to charge them.
Wind generator or something, yes. Everybody understand that? Any more questions to Chris on this? Sounds like he's on top of this. Sounds real good.
No, the stuff I've seen on, you know, just on TV and that, of solar and that, or West Des Moines and that, you know, is more... They're not worried about this kind of stuff. They're worried about the aesthetics, you know?
And, you know, a town like West Des Moines doesn't have an electric company.
Yeah, I know.
So it's mid-American that's worried about selling the electricity, but you're right, Rob. That is gonna be a big deal, too.
And we maybe need to incorporate a little of something like that in there, but I don't know what exactly.
I think so, too. You know, we've got some rules that say that you can only have a shed so big, so tall. So we wouldn't wanna have a solar array that's bigger than that, you know?
And I don't know about these things. They'll get hot.
I'll bet they do.
You know, and you have to have some kind of a barrier around them, because, you know, they talk like, oh, like out in California and all, in the desert, they put them out there and yeast fire them and just fry before they get all like... Stuff like that. I don't know if that's true or not, you know, but I've just heard stuff like that, you know?
Well, there's one up there at Oakabooja where we go fishing on the east side of the road, and they have it on the ground. There's probably about 14 or 15 panels, about, they must be six foot wide and about eight foot tall. They're sitting there, you know, like this.
Yeah.
They're sitting just right on the ground. I mean, yeah, the grass is brown, but I don't know. It don't look bad. It's on the south side of the house, and... I kinda presume that might be their only electricity. I don't know, because you don't see no wires or a damn thing anywhere. They dug it in the ground, I'm sure, but there's a lot of solar panel there for...
And they're putting something up by Fort Dodge, a solar thing. I just read it in the paper, heard on the radio or something, you know, somebody, I think just a little bit east of Fort Dodge, connected with Fort Dodge, or they're gonna...
Well, I wonder if this didn't have batteries connected to it somewhere, that they were running off the batteries that night.
The water's charged up, and it goes into a battery grid.
Goes into a battery.
And then wants to start.
They feed off of them batteries.
They feed off them batteries until the sun comes back up, and then they...
That's kinda what I wonder. That's awfully big unit, just for that house.
Yeah, that's pretty expensive.
Yeah.
Okay, I want everybody to pay attention to that and make sure you talk to Gary.
You know, our forefathers delved into wind power. We should look at solar in the future or somehow.
Not a bad idea.
Especially, you know, we've got land down here that we can't do anything with. It's gonna cost us $30,000 an acre to build it up above the flood plain. Why the hell don't we just put something in there that'll generate something for us? I don't know.
You know, to think about it.
Yeah, it is. It's a good idea. It's a very good idea.
It is actually a good idea, because one of the things that Mean has talked about is doing something called community solar. So if we have Joe down the street who wants to put a solar panel on his house, because he wants to be green, you know, most, I think most of the people around here are gonna wanna save money.
Yeah.
If they do it, but, you know, if we put in a community solar, then we can sell or, you know, however you wanna do that, shares in that, and then they get credits on their bill type of thing. And then, and then this whole, this whole net metering policy and rate schedule and all that stuff, we could just throw that out the window, because we could say, you can't do that. I mean, you can't. And actually, we can't really tell them that they can't do it on their house. We can just tell them that we aren't gonna pay you anything for it. You can put it on your house.
Because we've got a community one.
Right, we have a community one, and if you wanna get paid for it, you get involved.
You gotta join, yeah.
I'm sure there's grants for that, too.
Well, Ron, you tell Gary to make sure he looks this over real close.
Good on Who's in Tower here coming up. There's gonna be a lot of money for it, I'm wondering.
Yeah, they're good.
And then Rob is gonna tell Franny. Make sure Franny gets this written, see what he says. Okay, discuss and approve rezoning to commercial. Lot 6, Lot 2 for Sherwoodish, and that's the one by the bank.
No, this is, this is the one down by Marilyn Ashinger.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. You're right.
And they, I read this, too, where they said that would be, what type of? Light industrial?
Yeah, light industrial. So that's one thing I need to talk to you guys about. What we need to do here, we have to, we have to go in steps here, right? So we've, we've done a couple of the steps, and we had the public hearing today. The next thing that we needed to do is the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to give you guys a recommendation, and they've done that. It's on page 19. So what they did was, instead of rezoning it to commercial, they suggest we rezonate to light industrial, because that's what it is all the way around there. What we're talking about is right here. See this yellow right here?
Yeah.
This is Marilyn Ashinger's lot and our lot, and all of this blue around it is light industrial. This is Vertus Pittman's here, and he goes all the way up to his house. I don't know how that actually all works, but it is, it's done. So, so they suggest making this lot here light industrial also. And all that changes, it doesn't change any of the stipulations as far as the building goes, but what it does is it makes it, it makes the lot able to accept a storage building without any other board giving it a special exception.
Like a big storage shed or something like that?
If they were just gonna build a storage shed on there, and it's a commercial lot, then we have to have the Board of Adjustments give them a special exception for that. Which they would do, I mean, because it's a storage building, and it's gonna, you know, it's gonna be good for the city. So I don't think that would be a big deal, but if it's light industrial, then it just makes it easy. Then you just do it. You do the building permit, and you build a building, and you're done.
Yep.
You don't have to go through the next, you know, five or six steps to do what we would've had to do, so. So if you guys are okay with that, all you really have to do is...
Pass a motion?
You know, yeah, a motion that you accept this recommendation, and then we'll, we'll have a... Then we've got a resolution that... No, we'll have a resolution on the next meeting.
Right.
I'm sorry.
We can approve it tonight, and then we'll have the resolution.
You can, you can accept the...
Change.
Recommendation from...
Recommendation of the committee.
Yeah, the committee, and then we'll have a resolution on the next one, and then that resolution will change this and the map, too.
The zoning map, yes, right. Any other questions for Chris? Everybody clear on that? I would accept a motion, please?
I'd make that motion to accept that.
Second?
Second.
Removed and seconded to approve the rezoning to a...
To accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning.
To, yeah, to accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Rezone to a light industrial.
To a light industrial, yes. Thank you. Ron? Roll call. Rob?
Yes.
Gary's absent. Franny's absent. Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Moved and approved. Discuss and approve Jay Stoltenberg as the Planning and Zoning Member, replacing Vic Johnson. Vic Johnson has come in and requested that Chris that he would like to retire, and...
Ready?
Not that old jet for crap.
He's still walking. All right, I'll let him know you got 20.
I make a motion to accept Jay Stoltenberg for replacement of Vic Johnson.
Well, I was gonna tell you that Chris really put a 357 in Stoltenberg's head and said either you do it or you're done.
I hope so. He needs a 357.
Roll call vote, Rob.
Yes.
Gary's absent. Franny's absent. Albert?
Gonna get in that motion now, didn't we?
Yes.
Ron, yes. Discuss and approve Resolution 2016-04, Resolution accepting the bid from Mark Arnold for Main Street Lot, 5 grand.
Yeah, so this is the final step in that project for us. And basically, what this is saying is, you guys are okay with him bidding $5,000 on it. We're okay with selling a 60-by-90-foot lot, which has already been surveyed. You guys can see the, the flags down there.
That and the little orange stripes and all that good shit.
Yep.
Yep. Does everybody go by there and look? Ron?
I haven't, no.
I know.
I, I, I driven by.
I didn't drive by and walked by.
Okay, walk by. Okay, I'm sorry.
He probably went around it several times, made sure.
I didn't realize it was City Council meeting.
Okay.
Let's see what it's taped. So let's, let's talk about one other thing with that. You know, we talked about the house removal. We've got that figured out. Should be, should be sometime this week, I think, or early next week, that the house will be removed. The tree. We, we talked to Tim Peters about giving us a bid. We've talked to Rick and Darrell. They think they can cut it down. We've talked to John Healy. He thinks he can push it over. I don't, I don't feel comfortable with our guys cutting it down. I think we could do it. But, you know, for a couple thousand dollars, one way or another, if we save that money, whatever it is, I think, I think having somebody else with the liability is better than us. John Healy can push it over, but then he's gotta sit on the street to do it. He might tear the street up, you know, I just, I think we need to get somebody to cut it down, and...
Like Tim Peters, eh?
Well, now, here's the thing. Well, I went and talked to Tim and told him that we were gonna get a bid from him, and I didn't talk to anybody else, but I had a guy come in today and ask me if he could put a bid in on it. I said, hell, yeah, I don't think, I don't think it'd be a problem. So I think we should probably get bids. What do you guys think?
Yep.
But if we're gonna do it...
If there's interest there, I'd say yes.
Yeah, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do a, we're gonna do a, like a spec sheet, like we did with the house. So everybody's bidding the same thing.
Yep, apples to apples.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the City of Carroll, because I guess they do that. They have a sheet that they send to people and tell them to bid it, so. I'm gonna call them, have them send us one, and we'll send it out to a couple of people.
It's saying on it, cut tree down, remove tree?
Yeah, I think that, clean tree up. I don't know what it says. That's why I'm calling the City of Carroll, because I have no idea.
Well, if you have that, then you'll have it on hand for if we ever have any more.
Plus, plus, it also makes it easier if, you know, if the guy who didn't get the bid comes in and says, why the hell didn't I get the bid? Then I can show him. You bid this, this guy bid this. Same thing, you know? Just makes it easier. It covers our butt a little bit, so.
That's fine.
You know, we're gonna have a lot of ash trees probably gonna have to come down somewhere later.
Well, I agree with that. And I don't know what we're gonna do there.
Yeah, we'll have to cross our borders.
Rick and I have talked about that, and you know, if they get the, if they get the ash borer this year, they probably won't die till next year, and they won't fall over the year after that, so we've got a little bit of time, but...
Time, yeah.
Uh, I don't know. That's something I don't even wanna think about right now. Don't.
Any other questions?
So all of that, all that aside, we'll get bids on the tree, and then, yeah, we just need to...
You're gonna take bids. They don't have to be somebody in town, neither, right?
No.
Can be out of town if you're taking the bids.
Yeah.
Any other questions, concerns?
But I'd sure like to keep the money down if we could.
Yeah, this, this guy today was out of town, and there, there are a couple, a couple of guys that do it here in town.
Yeah.
I would talk to Jason Rassell.
Yeah.
He drew mine down. Mine was a big tree.
I don't think he'll put a bid in on it, though.
Mine was a big tree.
I think he's too busy. I talked to him this weekend, too.
Yeah, he's out on his own now, then? So is it, is it Rassell Construction, or is that, I don't know?
Rassell, that's it.
I don't know, yeah.
Okay.
Whatever.
Okay. Any more discussion on Resolution 2016-04? Any more questions for Chris? If not, I entertain a motion, please?
Motion to accept the Resolution Number 2016-04 on the sale of a lot, whatever that lot number is, for the amount of 5,000.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2016-04, accepting the bid for 5 grand, to Mark Arnold. Roll call. Rob?
Yes.
Gary's absent. Franny's absent. Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Motion passed. Discuss and approve Resolution 2016-03, Resolution to approve the sale of revenue bonds for County Landfill, 1.53 mil.
Yeah, and so I asked the question, because I, I, right away, thought, well, if we gotta pay back $153,000, but it doesn't, doesn't really have anything to do with the City of Walke, other than the landfill commission will get the money from us to pay the bonds. And we've got a 2080 agreement with the landfill commission, and so they can't go out and sell a bond without all of our approval.
Correct.
So we have to approve this, and then they have to pay for it.
I make a motion of 2016-03 to do the $153,000 bond issue for the landfill.
Second?
Second.
Any other further discussion? Any questions? Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Rob?
Yes.
Gary's absent. Franny's absent. Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Discuss and approve liquor sampling at Jamboree.
Eight o'clock tonight, if we get done.
We'll be done.
Liquor license, Jamboree Foods.
I make a motion to approve the liquor license for the Jamboree Foods.
I'll second that. That's better than Rob, isn't it?
I gotta vote on this, so, no, I have to.
Yeah, you do. That's not that big a deal, though.
Yeah, you can abstain.
You can abstain. And I'm not calling for a roll call vote. I ain't gonna call for a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay? Okay, here comes Chris.
The funnest part of the whole meeting.
Chris is gonna put you to sleep. The clerk's report!
Page 26. We're gonna do interaction here. I'm gonna ask you guys questions. You're gonna answer them. Just kidding.
What'd you send all that money for?
I'm just kidding.
How come you got fancy celery down here?
Well, that's good for us. We get that back.
I know, we get it back.
So, yeah, I guess what I'd say there, cemetery digging, what we did was wrote a check out of the general fund instead of out of the cemetery fund, and so we just transferred money from the cemetery fund into the general fund, and that's why there's a positive $500 there.
Because we had to pay that back, right? They overpaid us.
No. Oh, yeah, that, but that's a different deal.
Oh, that's a different deal?
That's a whole different deal.
Okay.
And what this was, was Rick dug a couple of graves.
Oh, yeah.
So we paid him out of the general fund, so we took money out of the cemetery fund to put it in the general fund.
Okay, all right.
And otherwise, you know, I mean, you can see 58,000 was the bank balance last month. This month's at 67,000, and you received some payments. You can see how we got there. Balance sheet, if you look at page 27, all of those accounts are reconciled to the bank. If you look at the, kinda right there in, oh, no, that's not it. Up at the top a little bit, about quarter of the way down, revenue sink bond, it's $40,000 exactly. We don't use that account anymore. We made that account because we had a revenue bond, and the auditor wanted us to have that account to pay that revenue bond out of. We paid that revenue bond off last May, so we don't have that anymore. But we, we kept that $40,000 in there, because that's what we got paid for the lots up here.
Up here, yep.
We sold those lots. We got paid $40,000 for them. We don't need that money for anything right now, so I thought, let's just leave it in there, and, you know, that wasn't nice. I shouldn't say, "I thought that." You guys kinda made that suggestion, that we need to keep that $40,000 in there, so that's what we're doing with that. The rest of those accounts there, if you look down at the debt service, we got $65,000 in there. That's enough money right now to pay our bond debt in June, June 1st. We just got a little dab of debt service money in from the county, so this next month, we'll get enough debt service money to pay our interest. So we'll have enough money in there to pay our interest and our principal payments for June. So that's working how we want it to. That's, that's a good thing. Really, not a lot else on there, other than if you look way at the bottom, that $170,000. You know, we wanted to save $150,000 every year to pay, to begin to pay for our electric project. Well, right now, we've got $170,000 in there, and, you know, so if we continue to put 6,500 bucks in there, you know, we'll have plenty the next time we need some money to buy some equipment.
Equipment or supplies or...
Because we've got enough, we've got enough equipment and supplies, material for next year, for this year.
For this year.
This coming year, I should say.
2016.
Right, so, uh, we don't have to spend any money.
We can stay ahead of the game and keep buying stuff.
We should be able to get our loan paid off at the bank, we should have enough money saved in here, so we should be, we should be in pretty good shape now, from now on. To, uh, to be able to pay for that unless something drastic happens.
As long, as long as we can stay ahead of the game, yes.
Now, one thing about that, there's sixty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars of that hundred and seventy thousand came from a C D that we had. That C D was for the revenue bond that we paid off because that revenue bond was an electrical bond. Uh, for the south electric project that we did. So that's sixty-nine thousand dollars of that savings. So that looks a little bit.
Deceiving.
Yeah, sure, that's a little bit deceiving, I guess you'd say. You know, that we, we haven't saved a hundred and seventy thousand in the last year, we've saved.
We have, we have what we have.
Right.
I know Myron said they were gonna start on now.
Yeah, not, not too long.
Yeah, he said maybe this week, he thought he was.
Well, they were gonna start this week, but Chris got hurt over the weekend. I don't know what he did, he hurts back. Yeah, he had, uh, three, three discs out, I just talked to him a little bit ago, so he's in pretty rough shape right now and so. Uh, he's hoping he can come back to work tomorrow, but, but he didn't know for sure.
Please do not hesitate to stop, Chris, if you have any questions. If you've got any concerns that you wanna ask him about, please don't hesitate to stop and ask him. Right, Chris?
Right, um, so, the only other thing I'd say on there is the cemetery checking accounts, eleven thousand six hundred bucks. Um, at some point in time, and I don't know when it's gonna be, but we're, we'll look back at that and we'll see. How much of that money is, is say, uh, money from lot sales? And we'll need to take that money out of there and put it into a C D. We'll, we'll just add to the C D that we've already got. Cause when you sell a lot out there, it's perpetual money. You can't really ever do anything with that. You're supposed to put that into an account and. Keep it so you spend the interest off of it. Well, back when they started that, spending the interest was okay because you actually made some interest.
Made, made some.
Is it possible?
Now you don't.
Is it possible to buy a used backhoe? City-owned? For Rick to dig the graves? Can we, can we consider for that possible?
Just for the cemetery.
Rather than, rather than that little cracker jack?
What about tigers?
Yeah, it's still for sale, right?
It's still for sale, what do they want for it? See, the, the thing that I was gonna say is, yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good idea, I think we could do that. And we'd probably need it, but I think there's a couple of things that we need before that. You know, I think we need a dump truck really bad.
Yeah.
That green dump truck, I, I don't think it ran most of the winter.
It's on its last leg.
You know, there's really nothing more frustrating, I talked to Rick a couple of times when he was trying to move snow, and there's really nothing more frustrating than at four o'clock in the morning going down to get the dump truck and you get.
It don't start.
Two blocks and it dies, and you can't move snow, so, uh, I don't know how many times you chewed me out about that, but.
No.
I think we really need to look at that.
Me too.
You know, uh, but we can.
Yeah, but that, we can't take that money out. If we just, for that cemetery fund, can't we take the money out of that to buy a dump truck for the cemetery?
Yeah, I think we could.
You know, beans, it'd be used specifically for the cemetery, that's it.
No, you can't say that, Albert. You can't say specifically. You can say it can be used for cemetery. But I don't think you can say specifically, because then you've, you've designated that truck.
Can't go anywhere other than that.
Well, I mean the backhoe, not the truck.
Either one of them.
Well, yeah.
Either one of them. You don't want them, you don't want them designated specifically to the cemetery.
We can take it out to use it.
I can do, I can do some research on that, Albert. I don't know how that works.
You know, beans, it's supposed to be in a note for specific for the cemetery, not to be used, you can spend the interest, but maybe you can spend the money.
If you buy something that's specifically for the cemetery.
Yeah. Either that or if we can go a truck. Whichever.
Yeah, I, I'll look into that and I'll let you guys know what I find out.
Way that we can do that because.
It can't hurt to ask.
No, because we're not getting the money off of that, interest off of that money hardly, a little bit. Come out the bunch.
Okay.
What did I say at the beginning of the meeting, Chris?
Shut your phone off. Okay, I'm shutting my phone off.
Okay, move on, Chris.
Uh, yeah. Okay, so if you go to page twenty-nine, uh, you can look at our general fund revenues there, um, nothing really out of ordinary. Um, community center rent was pretty good last month. General property taxes, you can see we're just getting a little dab of that stuff in. Uh, local option sales tax, we got some of those in.
One thing I would look at, so we go back up to twenty-seven. The community center, uh, just the main count, right under the main.
Checking accounts, right.
It's down pretty far. That's about. One of Nancy's payments, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm just thinking that, uh, as you look at something like the. Wellness checking, it's almost up to ten thousand dollars again, we may need to do something. Use, use some wellness money to.
And actually, we've talked about the park revenue or renovation fund, you know, that's got about seven thousand dollars in it. And the community center gave quite a bit of money, uh, fourteen thousand dollars roughly to the, to the park. Um, I don't think they need that money for anything else. Uh, you know, that project's been over for quite a while. When was the last time we wrote him a check, Lynn? Do you remember even? It's been several months, uh, so I think we could, we could move some of that money over. Uh, I don't, I don't have any problem with moving the wellness center money over. We really don't have any. Uh, bills in there. Every once in a while, you have somebody that asks you for, you know, this piece of equipment or that piece of equipment. Uh, but generally, those aren't terribly expensive.
I would, you know, just getting back to the, uh, shelter house, whatever it was, uh, account there. We're gonna go through a full summer here now. We may find out something we need.
Yeah.
I'm sure they're gonna need some benches or something on, on the east side there, that concrete.
And it doesn't mean we couldn't, doesn't mean we couldn't take that out of Wellness either.
I was gonna say, what, what?
We may have, we may have a donor.
Oh, okay.
Of some picnic tables.
Okay. Why couldn't, why couldn't we, uh, uh. Do what we did at the cemetery, you know, uh, this bench is donated by such and such a family, cause my, my folks. My mom would be very interested in donating a bench in care of Dale.
We've got, we've got a couple of people right now looking at donating picnic tables. And, uh, it sounds like they're gonna donate. All of them. Not all of them, four or five of them, so. Let's see where that goes and then, you know, I mean, we can hold that up. But, you know, Rob, talking about what you're talking about, I mean, we could, we could make a motion now to move some of that money over if that's what you wanna do.
Oh, I know, it's just something to keep in mind.
Not yet.
Yeah. What's the other receipts go? Doesn't look like we've got enough book to cover. Coming up in the future here.
Um, one other thing that I wanted to say about that too, that I forgot to, um, thanks, Rob, for making us go back. Uh, the TIF fund, right now it's forty-nine thousand, one eighty-two, twenty-one. Um. We should make a motion to transfer the TIF money into the general fund whenever we get it in, because. Uh. Everything that we've certified so far for the last two years.
The debt?
Right, has come out of the general fund. And, and that being the well. The new well down here, we certified that and then all of the electric, uh, electrical. Uh, we've, we paid all of that stuff out of the general fund also. Obviously, we got a, uh, loan for it, but we paid that out of the general fund. So what we would do is whenever we get any TIF money in, we transfer that right back to the general fund.
That's legal then, to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you wanna motion for that?
Yeah.
I make a motion that when we get the TIF money in, that it gets transferred right to the general fund.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion, concerns, questions? If not, I will, uh, propose a, uh. Roll call vote, Rob?
Aye.
Gary's, uh, absent, Franny's absent, Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
I think so. Yes.
That's like two and three quarters.
It passes. Long as you got two.
Okay.
Okay, so revenue is there on page twenty-nine, if there's any questions, let me know. And we'll move on to, uh. Uh, page thirty, and honestly, if you look at page thirty, right there in the middle, uh, closer to the bottom, you know, you got your snow revenue. Or your snow salaries and that's just about the only, uh, only thing in there other than our, uh. Pest control, our mosquito, uh, payment. We haven't even paid them yet, cause they won't call us and, and talk to me. We still got that, that check sitting here.
So the snow, snow removal is just twenty-two hundred, right?
No. You should be looking at the second column, that, the second column from the left is our.
Four thousand ninety-two.
Right, that's our current bills for, for last month.
Street salaries and stuff then, right, okay.
Yep. Um, next page, page thirty-one, you look at, you got your library, salaries and materials is about all that's on there. Nothing going on at the park. Very little at the pool. Um. Cemetery, that three dollars and twenty-one cents is a charge that we get from our cemetery account every month from the bank.
Oh, you talked about the pool, Lindsay, crowd media of the day, in fact, it was yesterday. She said we should start getting applications for lifeguards so that we know who we got and.
I talked to Chris about that, uh. Two weeks ago, we talked about it, week ago or something?
We need to get the pool board together, I think, to have a look it over.
Yep.
Because, you know, so we got an idea how many we got and we can go from there.
Me and Albert and Lindsay and, uh. Brenda.
Brenda.
Brenda, yes.
Yep, and it sounds like she's gonna take over, take the management as long as Brenda will help her, so.
Oh.
Lindsay will.
That's good.
That's farther what you told me.
Good for me.
Well, that's kinda what you told me the other day.
Let's, uh, you want me to set that up or you wanna set it up?
No, you set it up.
Okay.
Don't go beyond that for sure, but that's kinda.
I'll, I'll set that up and then we'll, uh. Then we'll talk about that. You guys can talk about that at that meeting.
Cause you sounded like when you talked to her last, that she was dead set.
Let's not talk about that anymore, let's.
No, no, because there's, there's something else come up into this, that's why she decided to.
Okay. Alright, uh, anything else, Chris? Keep going?
Yeah, not, not, uh. Not really anything of significance on that page. Um, next page, the road use fund. Got about thirty-eight thousand dollars in there, which is more than we need to, to pay for what we're gonna do this year and.
How much was that bid again?
Twenty-nine, right at thirty thousand, around. Twenty-nine thousand two hundred, so. So we've got that pretty much taken care of. Now, obviously, we have some other expenses out of there, we pay some salaries and stuff like that out of there, so.
Yeah, but we gotta keep getting money into there though, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it means.
We get about, we get about eight thousand bucks a month roughly.
So we.
Is that a month or, or is that quarterly?
A month.
No, a month.
A month, yep.
Okay.
Last month was eighty-four, sixty-five.
I see it.
So it, sometimes it's seventy-five hundred, sometimes eighty-five hundred, so it's just about eight thousand roughly. That you can figure for that, so.
Yeah, TIF would be next month, huh?
Yeah, uh, TIF and debt service both will be coming in next month and we'll probably get somewhere around thirty thousand dollars in our TIF. Um, that that'll go in there and. You can see that corn belt, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents, that's their last payment for their rebate. That, uh, that we did back in nineteen ninety-eight or ninety-nine, I don't remember when that building was built.
Yeah, seven or eight, yeah, something.
Sometime in there, but that's their last one anyway, so they're done. Um, and I think, uh.
Cookies has gotta be getting close.
Cook's sighting, I think, is done this year and Cookies is done in eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
So we're completely done with that in eighteen.
Okay.
Yep, um, debt service is another one that, you know, a little dab went in there this last month. Uh, we got a little bit more this month, next month, we should get enough to pay the interest that we need. Uh, and obviously, we've already got sixty-five thousand dollars in there. Uh, to pay our principal payment. Um, and then we get into. Page thirty-six is our utilities, uh. Electric and natural gas look really good. We got, I think. Lynn worked a little bit overtime last month and we got a lot of, uh, back bills paid. Uh, cause when you, when we get to there, I'll, I'll show you, uh, electric was. Electric and gas both were over ninety thousand dollars that we got in revenue and that, that doesn't happen very often. Usually, it's in the seventy-five to eighty thousand dollar range.
Got your whip out or what? Good job. Must be three fifty-seven.
She can get a little honor. Uh, water looks good. Water's looking good. I think water's gonna stay that way now, you know, I think our sewer's gonna start, uh, coming back.
Yep.
Yeah, you can see that we cut off quite a bit of that.
Let's not even go to the bottom one.
Yeah, we don't even.
Let's not even look at the bottom one.
We'll stop right at sewer.
Exactly right, my boy.
Move on.
Move on.
So look at our electric, you know, we got ninety-two thousand dollars worth of sale of electric and, and then you get your, uh, W I E money in there, that was a couple thousand bucks, so. And we got ninety-five thousand dollars in revenue last month and, uh, I'm not sure we've ever done that before. So that's the reason for the huge fifty-four thousand dollars. Plus, we've only got one payment for electricity in there, that was to either Mean or WAPA. Uh, so that, you know, that would lower that. Usually, those are about twenty thousand dollars, that'd lower that down a little bit too, but. Um, just getting those back payers to pay helps a lot. Uh, kinda the same way with natural gas, ninety-three thousand dollars.
Can we, uh.
Pretty good charge.
Can we get. You to get us a list of delinquent? People at next meeting? And, uh, that way we can kinda figure out who we wanna really target, who I need to hit pretty hard and. And I know that my daughter's gonna be one, so don't worry about it.
No, it's just. The winter moratorium isn't over until April first.
Right.
And once that, then we can shut off.
Yeah. What is today? Fourteenth, so next meeting is twenty eighth. So we're definitely getting a good look at who's coming up in April that I can say, you know.
We've got a plan.
Do that?
I can.
We've got a plan of, uh.
I can help you with it.
We've got a plan of, what is it, the seventeenth?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, we're gonna send out twelve day notices. That way they'll get them the day before the first or two days before the first and then we can give them a twenty-four hour notice. That way on the first, we can just go shut them off. Not that that, in some cases, does a lot of good, cause then some of them just move out and they go somewhere else. But, we're. Doing the best that we can do with what we've got, so.
Now, you've got that way lowered way more than we had a year ago, that's way, way down here.
I don't know, I mean, there's a lot of them that were.
If I remember correctly.
There was a lot of them that were there outstanding from before even I think you were here.
Yeah.
And they're just kinda in limbo.
But if you look at, if you look at the total number, you know, it's, uh, it's probably down a little bit. It, it doesn't. You know, it doesn't go way up or way down either way. Sometimes in November, then it goes way up because people think they don't have to pay their bill, cause they're gonna get assistance and so they don't have to do anything. And then we have to tell them that the assistance doesn't really pay their bill, it pays for a portion of it, so then. You want me to fight with them for a little bit?
That's what I keep telling her, so.
So, so if you look at natural gas, you know, thirty-four thousand dollars we made in that account last month, that's. I mean, obviously, we didn't have any expenses in there other than just what it cost to buy the gas. So, uh, that's good. Water. This is pretty much normal for water, about a five thousand dollar, uh. Net revenue. So that one should stay. Should stay steady. Sewer, that, obviously, that's gonna.
Increase.
Continue, you know, it's gonna continue to, to look kinda like it does now, cause we've got that, we've got the increase on there now and, uh. Haven't really heard anything from anybody about, you know, my bill's this much higher, so, um, I, I don't, I mean, obviously.
You're already wrong, it's the store. Nobody's complaining to me. Albert?
I've been trying to tell everybody that asked me about it, well, I said, that wasn't our idea, it's the landfill up there, that we gotta pay for that stuff and they said, well, that's fine, so.
Okay.
And then landfill is.
Anything else, Chris?
Just what it is, the landfill.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I mean, on page forty-one, you can see we had eight thousand dollars worth of contractual services this last month and. That's the quarterly assessment of five thousand dollars plus three thousand dollars worth of bags. So that's why that's so high.
Oh, okay.
So that's why that's so high. Generally, that won't be in there and so that won't make it look quite so bad. But it is. That's all I got.
Questions, concerns? Anything for Chris?
Uh, I got it. It wasn't a complaint, it was more of a recommendation, I guess. Uh, we've got a sign over here for the, um, handicap accessible. But they get over here and they wanna come out there and they see the steps and they don't know where to go.
Oh.
Just, just, uh, maybe a sign or something. You, use the main.
Elevators down here or something like that.
Yeah, something, uh, use, use the city clerk entrance for for elevator.
Or they, they got a good pusher.
They had a wedding here.
They got a good pusher, they can go up the ramp.
They just don't know where it's at, you know, strangers.
Yeah.
If, uh, there's any other, no other questions or concerns, I would entertain a motion to approve the clerk's report, please.
I'll make a motion, we approve the clerk's report.
Second?
I'd second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the clerk's report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Discuss and approve energy efficiency payment to the lumberyard.
Yeah, if you guys remember, we, uh, we approved another two thousand dollars for our energy efficiency program. We didn't have to buy any bulbs this year because we still have bulbs. Um, we did have one person wanna take advantage and I don't know, Lynn, did, did you ever get ahold of, uh, Shirley?
I did and she just told me that she wasn't feeling well and that she didn't have any sticker or anything. So I told her maybe she should try to contact that gym supply man.
Yeah.
And she just basically said she didn't feel like doing it, so. I've heard from her since, so.
Well, so we had, uh, we've had three businesses come in and ask us about lighting program. And the lumberyards one, the school is another and, um, actually, both of those businesses could have used up the two thousand dollars themselves. But they decided that they would work together and split it. Um, so we're gonna, you know, obviously, this is, uh, what is it, four thousand dollars, I think, that their whole project is.
Eighty-nine.
Right. So we're only gonna, we're only gonna pay them a thousand dollars for this forty-three eighty-nine. Because the school's gonna get the other thousand or whatever's left over. Uh, we'll see if Shirley comes in and, and, uh, wants her fifty dollars for her. She, Shirley Spencer got a, um, new washer or new dryer, was a new dryer. Uh, and she wanted to get her rebate for the Energy Star programming. So we just told her that we needed an Energy Star.
Sticker.
Sticker or whatever it is to show that it is Energy Star and so, um, she hasn't been able to give us that yet, but that's fifty bucks or twenty-five dollars. So we'll honor that. Um, and then the school will probably be on the next meeting for the other, uh, the other thousand dollars that, that we've got in this account, so. So all we're asking you to do is approve a thousand dollar payment to the, to the wall like lumberyard, cause they're gonna move from fluorescent lighting up to, uh, LEDs. They're gonna do about half the building.
Motion?
I'd make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Any other questions or concerns to Chris for the lumberyard? If not, I would, uh, entertain a, uh, vote. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
All opposed, nay?
And I will tell you that the same people who did the bid for the lumberyard have been up here and they're, they're gonna be here on Thursday and they're gonna show us what we could do our building for. And I don't think it's important that we really need to do our building, but I at least wanna know what it would cost us, you know?
Well, I think, I think it is because I think people look up to this city hall as the, uh, premier. They, they look to see that if we're, if we're doing it, they should be doing it.
That's a good point.
That, and that, I guess Rob has instilled that in me. You always said that city hall oughta be the premier.
Million dollar building.
Yep.
Ski was in it.
And you know, I think if we did it, we'd kinda do it like the lumberyard's doing it, you know, maybe do phases. And that, that hallway light has some lights that are on all day. You know, there's some other lights that are on all day, so those might be the ones that we do first if we do anything.
Yeah, cause you could leave these alone, cause these are hardly ever used in here, so.
Right.
Yeah, good idea.
Some other ones that are like.
But I, I think, uh, we gotta jump forward in the progress of this place to show that we are energy efficient and we wanna be energy efficient.
I, I think that's a great idea, Steve.
Well, I know, I, I can't remember who it was I talked to when they put their lights in their house. Their electricity bill went down quite a little to light bulbs, just render light bulbs.
Yeah.
They said they could really see a difference.
I was really surprised that, I was up, I had to babysit my grandkids and I was really surprised that my daughter must've come down and got a bolo of light bulbs because all of hers were the energy efficient in the kitchen, in the bathrooms and, and stuff. So I was, I was really impressed.
Yeah, I don't know if she did or not, but I think, I think it's a good deal, uh, you know, if we ever do that again, we would probably not buy a compact fluorescents. We'd probably buy LED lights. They're starting to get cheaper.
Yeah, they're half of what they were a couple of years ago.
Right, and they're even more efficient than a compact fluorescent is. They're a little safer and.
Yeah.
So. So I've got a couple of things in the forum if you guys, uh.
Yep, we're good, Ty.
Done. Um, first one is you guys can see here that, uh, March ninth, no.
That's gone.
April something, I don't know.
Yeah, April fourteenth. I was looking at the minute. April fourteenth is, uh, the meeting in Shaler. Uh, and they wanna know by March thirty-first.
That's what Albert was telling me. Why do you gotta know so early?
They will know, gets a new business. Uh, they wanna know, you know, uh, to, so they can get ready, I guess. They wanna probably know what you wanna eat and all that kinda stuff too. Uh, but they will, they will charge us. If we say we're gonna go and we don't go, they will charge us.
No matter what, well, that's, Shaler's always been that way.
Yep, they're, they're. So, uh, so let me know, you know, if you guys do or, or, uh, know for sure that you are or not.
The end of the month, right?
It's April fourteenth. Yeah, we need to know by the thirty-first.
Or March thirtieth.
March thirty-first, yeah.
Or thirty-first or whenever it is.
Okay, so then if you look at, uh, the next page, uh, March twenty-second is the Northwest Iowa League meeting and that's in, at King's Point in, uh. Oh, yeah, it's the twenty-fourth. We need to know by the twenty-second, I'm sorry.
John or, uh, Rob will probably go up and see his buddy John for that one.
So let me know by the twenty-second if you wanna go to that one.
No for Steve.
Okay, so one other thing that I need to talk to you about and we can't do anything about it, but I wanna talk to you about it just to inform you guys. Uh, Rob and I had a meeting today with the TIF committee. Um, we've got an opportunity for, uh, not necessarily a new business, but, um, you know, a, a building here in town, down here on the.
By Hallitz?
By Hallitz, the lots down there. Uh, the, the, uh, TIF committee has made a recommendation to you guys. I'll get that written up and I'll have it on the next council meeting. Um, they're recommending that we follow our guidelines and, uh, it's, it's gonna be, you know, about a pretty close to a three hundred thousand dollar building, maybe even a three hundred thousand dollar building that we're gonna get put in there. And so, uh, we, we said in our guidelines that if, you know, if you put up a three hundred thousand dollar building, we'd give you the lots for free. At least a three hundred thousand dollar building, we'd give the lots.
Are all, all, are all the lots sold in?
It would, i- if.
Cover all the lots.
Yes, it would cover. This particular business would cover all the lots and, uh.
Cause I was supposed to check with you tonight, cause Dick already jumped me again about one or two of the lots down here.
He did?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
So.
Well, you and I have to talk about that afterwards, but what we need to do, you know, and, and we haven't gotten, uh, uh, for sure from the person that we're talking to, uh, what it is, you know, spending the works and it's something that they're kinda.
Yes.
Yeah.
We wanna.
They're gonna build two hundred dollar light, I would say.
Yeah, we wanna keep moving forward.
Give them the lots, let them start building.
I'm, I'm gonna tell Dick he's gonna hold right now until we decide with this other.
Okay, that's fine.
Cause I, I'd just soon go with that.
Yeah, cause that'll take in the whole lot.
Yeah.
Take in everything down there.
Yep.
If we can get that going, that would be great.
Yeah, this is, this'll be a pretty good deal for us, I think.
And we lost out on that other deal in Greeda.
One last thing that I wanna talk to you guys about is, uh, municipal energy association, I mean, this is our, this is a company that we buy electricity from. A couple of months ago, three months ago, maybe, I told you guys that the, their year had started out really well. They were four million dollars over budget, uh, as far as net revenue, meaning they had four million dollars more than what they thought they would. Uh, they are right now, uh, and their year ends the end of March. Yeah, the end of March. Uh, this is through January. They're right now six point seven million over budget. So that's really good for us. It's really good for the whole company. Uh, most of it has to do with, uh, electricity that they don't have to buy. So they budgeted for twelve million dollars worth of electricity that they were buying and now they had to buy ten. You know, that kinda thing. And that's, that's good too. Uh, so, you know, that's not gonna help us tomorrow.
Been a mild winter for one time.
Yeah, down the line, down the line, years to come, that should
Help us.
Turn out to help us.
Yes.
A little bit, so, um, that's a positive. And, you know, over the last few years, we haven't had a lot of positives come out of that company, so.
Any other, uh, questions, concerns on the public forum? Rob, anything to add?
No.
Oh, shit. Albert?
We missed it.
Ron?
What did we miss?
It's eight o'clock.
Yeah, son of a buck, we run two minutes over. There goes the tasty content.
Keep us entertained.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No roll call?
No, no. Rob's had enough roll calls tonight. I thought he was gonna get.
I thought I was gonna.